There's gonna be a window?
A glass, yeah.
Okay.
Lookout glass.
That's a good prop.
For now it is. It's a puppet show. Puppet show after this.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the special meetings of the Public Finance Authority, Water Utility Authority, Housing Successor Agency, and City Council Order. Deputy City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Martin. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Zamora.
Here.
Mayor Protem Rounds.
Here.
And Mayor Sarno is absent.
Thank you. Deputy City Clerk, I think you have an announcement.
Members of the Public Financing Authority and Water Utility Authority receive $150 for their attendance at these meetings.
Thank you. The city of Santa Fe Springs will allow for an invocation to be offered at its council meetings and is open to any faith or religion on a voluntary basis. Invocational speakers shall be limited to one minute. Please contact the city's clerk office if you'd like to offer an invocation. At this time, I'd like to call upon Councilmember Rodriguez to lead today's invocation. Please stand.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Our Heavenly Father, we give thanks tonight for the privilege of meeting together to deliberate on matters affecting our city. We ask for your guidance in our efforts to work for the betterment of our community. In your name we pray. Amen.
Please remain standing. At this time, I'd like to call upon the youth leadership to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Yeah, please state your name and school and what grade you're in, please.
Hello, everyone. My name is Valerie Bohorquez, and we're both currently seniors attending Santa Fe High School.
Hello, everyone. I'm Zulama Gumboa, and as Valerie stated, I am a senior attending Santa Fe High School, and we are both part of the Youth Leadership Committee, which this past weekend, we had the privilege to attend Green Valley Lake for a YLC retreat.
As Zulamo was saying, we are both members of the YLC. We do a yearly retreat to Green Valley Lake, and I am excited to state that we have many upcoming events for this year. Thank you.
Are we invited?
Yes, of course. Have a good night.
Thank you, girls. I'd like to introduce the following representative from the Chamber of Commerce who is with us tonight via YouTube, Ramon Van Cott, CEO of LaFell Manufacturing Company. Welcome, sir. Presentations by Ajua. I'd like to call upon General President of Ajua, Yanet Navarro.
Hi, how are you guys? I'm really, really honored to be here tonight. On behalf of the volunteers and supporters of Asociación de Jaliscienses Unidos en Acción, I would like to express our deep gratitude for Santa Fe Spring City Councilor to their invaluable support and partnership. It's a greatest hope that this year we will be able to hold the festivales in this city. The Fiesta de Octubre represent Jalisco the most emblematic cultural festival held in November 4th and 5th to 2023 in this city. The Oktoberfestival in LA are the initiative of Ajua that takes place of collaboration of the state of Jalisco, as well of the government and institution of California. Therefore, due to the success, the celebration of 2023, we would like to invite once again to the city of Santa Fe Spring to host these festivales in 2024. Due support and participation, we help us materialize the new edition. At the moment, we propose Saturday, the 12th and 13th of October of 2024, starting at 2:00 and culminating at 10:00. This is not just about the venue's great location. This is easy access to the major travel routes to Santa Fe Spring's largest recreation spaces, but also Santa Fe Spring's extensive support that makes us feel as home. As you know, Fiesta de Octubre take a place with the framework of various activities to promote culture, gastronomy, music, and social, so it represents a valuable opportunity to exchange experiences and build collaborating networks between cities, as well as relationships between the people of Jalisco and the immigrant community of California at the event truly family-friendly. This city collaboration represents a great support to proceeds of invigoration of the immigrant community establishes in this city. I reiterate my appreciation for this significant support for this association, and I'm looking forward to start the conversation for the city with the city staff. Thank you so much, and we prepared some of the video and some numeral to check how many people we attend, and it was like 32,000 people. And then we really, really appreciate all the support for you guys. Yes, totally free, yes. It was some collaboration for Jalisco, like I said, and you know, you guys, and we find some sponsors. But I would like to see the video, if you can. If you want, I'm gonna send you the numerals to have the all the numerals for that. Thank you so much, and we bring a little present for you guys. And we will look forward to see you.
Yanet, I just want to say, on behalf of the city of Santa Fe Springs, it was a great time, it was a lot of fun. I think everybody really enjoyed themselves very, very much, and we have some stuff to talk about for October of this year, but you know what? Again, it was a wonderful event. I didn't expect anything like it, it was great.
Thank you so much.
I tell you, you know how to party.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Mayor Proteme? Yanet, I'll say it in Spanish and English. It was a pleasure to do this, and we did it in two months, and look at how big we got. And it was something that no one in this city had ever done before. And everything went perfectly. And we were waiting for this year to make it even bigger.
Of course. I think with a little more publicity, we could attract more people to this city, and we're already so excited.
Yes, thank you. What I said was, I don't think anybody realized how big this event was gonna be or how spectacular it was. It was literally planned in 60 days, and to see how it went, what all the event that happened, and it was literally without a flaw of anything. And the love that you saw, just the fact of how much fun people were having, and people were enjoying themselves from the family, the kids, the adults, all ages, I mean, me and Jane were having a blast out there in the back, in the front. It was just, it was so much fun, and it was such a great time. So I can't wait to see what's gonna happen this year. So, it was a pleasure.
It was 60 entrepreneurs that we bring from Mexico. Not just tequila, it was hincra and dresses and...
Everything, everything. So thank you for picking Santa Fe Spring. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Yanet.
Next, we have introduction of city's new Creative Media Communications Team. I'd like to call upon the Creative Media Communications Team to please step forward.
Hello, fellow councilmembers. Thank you for allowing us this opportunity to speak here tonight. My name is Manny Caldona, Admin Assistant Two, and I'm here today as part of the Creative Media and Communications Team to let you know a little bit about who we are and what we do. The Creative Media Communications Team was formed in November 2023, and it included bringing together staff from both the City Managers Department and the Community Services Department. Today, we'll be working together under one roof to help with the city's communication needs. So, who are we? Let me, here's a short video to provide you with a brief highlight. Awesome. Well, I hope you enjoyed that and gained a glimpse of the creative mediums that we'll be using for future communication. Now, I'd like to introduce our Public Information Officer, Raylene Barazza, to share more about our purpose.
Thank you, Manny. So, why the need for our team? Empowering connections and creating community. We are here to inform, engage, and enrich the lives of those in the Santa Fe Springs community through the power of accurate, current, and transparent messaging, utilizing effective and innovative strategies in the creative realm of digital media and communications. Our purpose is to be the storytelling engine of the organization, translating ideas into compelling narratives. We strategically create engaging content from social media to press releases to connect with our community. Through innovative visuals and impactful messages, our goal is to build strong relationships, amplify our mission, and encourage a vibrant and informed community. Why is our team vital? Our team plays a vital role in a multitude of communications necessities, such as building brand awareness, community engagement, crisis management, building legitimacy and trust, incorporating feedback and data collection, and enhancing public awareness, just to name a few. Through strategic messaging and engaging campaigns, we cultivate a strong brand presence that resonates with our community. We prioritize community engagement by encouraging open dialogues to ensure every voice is heard. In times of crisis, we work proactively with other departments to distribute accurate messaging and ensure resources are available to keep everyone safe. Building legitimacy and trust is at our core. As we strive to be transparent, accountable, and responsive to the needs of our community, we actively seek and incorporate feedback to ensure our initiatives align with the needs and expectations of our residents. Utilizing data collection, we fine-tune our communication strategies, and more importantly, learn how we can improve to meet the needs of our target audience. Together, our Creative Media and Communications Team is the bridge that encourages a connected, informed, and empowered city. I now like to introduce Malia Garcia to talk about how we communicate.
Thank you, Raylene. Hello, my name's Malia, and I'm the Program Leader Three for our team. So how many of you guys have a social media account? How many of you guys are following the city's account? Good. Those of you who aren't, you should be, because communications is key. It's not what you say, it's also how you say it and how you make others feel. And that's the essence of why our team was made. We set out to make sure everyone who comes across our city and media knows exactly what we're all about. Our media includes many types of mediums, just as Manny showed you earlier, but one of our biggest duties is to create the content for the city and its social media account. This is done through flyers, social media posts, videos such as reels, and artworks around the city, just to name a few. We keep the value of professionalism close to us through presentations, such as the one you're looking at right now for the city council meeting, which our very own team member, Loriann, revamped recently. We work with the other departments of the city to create marketing materials and campaigns. This includes the various logos that they have, the colors, and the fonts that they should be using to emphasize information. Our social media accounts and city websites are typically the first thing the public's going to look for when they want to know more about an event or anything else that may be happening in the city. We make sure that all that information is accurate to build a foundation of trust with our residents, just like Raylene mentioned, and we make sure that our posters are engaging to keep them coming back for more. And in case that a public service announcement needs to be made, we have a procedure put in place to make sure the correct information gets out to you as soon as possible. But all of this isn't done by magic. My team members and I have the hard and technical skills such as photography, graphic design, and artwork creation to make all of this come to life. Finally, we break down our analytics and evaluate them to see where we can go from here, but I'd like to pass it on to Loriann to give you some more details about that.
Thank you, Malia. My name is Loriann, and I'm the Communication Specialist for our newly-formed media team. Today, I'm excited to share with you why we stand out in the world of digital content creation. Back in March 2023, we began having media planning meetings twice a month, and these sessions gave us insight into data analytics where we delved into our audience's preferences. We examined top-performing posts, audience demographics, favorite media types, and pinpointed what time our audience engaged with our content. This strategic approach allowed us to uncover the who, what, when, and where of our audience. But beyond the numbers and statistics, we sought out the why, and through meaningful engagement, we observed the motives that drove our audience to visit our page. To summarize, we're innovative. We don't just reach out to our audience, we connect with them. We don't just produce content, we craft experiences tailored to the unique preferences and behaviors of our viewers. In the past year, our team has been on fire. We've been whipping up a grand total of 1,754 social media posts, which consist of photos, custom flyers, and videos, all crafted here in-house. With the support of our online community, we've had the pleasure of welcoming 3,400 new followers to our network, and that's thanks to the connections we've built through our content. And last but not least, we've organically reached 3.9 million users, which goes to show the authenticity and value embedded in our content. So we're pretty popular, not only because we're gaining followers, but because we're building relationships. To review our current state, we established a shared purpose. We've worked diligently to define our mission, aligning our efforts towards a common goal, and this shared purpose is the compass that guides us through every project and decision. And collaboration extends beyond our team. We've initiated meetings with each city department, understanding their marketing needs, and fostering better internal communication practices. It's about creating seamless connections within our organization. So there you have it, the journey of our incredible communications team. We're not just awesome, we're a force of positive change, and to continue to evolve and innovate, stay tuned for more remarkable stories and impactful communication. So before I hand it off to Kylie, I just want to thank everyone for being part of our success story, and I also want to do a quick giveaway. So for those who are paying attention, who can tell me how many followers we got last year? Close. So we got 3,700? He said 3,700. What's your guess? 3,600? Do I have anyone else going on for 3,000? 3,800? So closest? Oh, wait, who? Right over here? Ooh, we got 3,801. Do I have any more? Do I have 3,802? All right, so you actually guessed closer. It is 3,400 new followers. And you got a... Let's see what we got down here. Where is our prizes? Oh, here we go. He can go ahead.
So, thank you, Loriann, for highlighting some of the amazing work being done by our Creative Media and Communications Team. My name is Kylie Torres, and I'm the Management Analyst Two for the team. Today, I'd like to share a little bit about some of our future strategies that are vital for the continued growth and development of the Santa Fe Springs community. The future of our team relies really on three simple, yet key strategies. Reinforcing our foundation, a customer-centric approach, and being at the forefront of technological advances. As with any other operation, we want to build a solid foundation from which to grow. We recently brought on a communications consultant to assist us in reinforcing the foundation through doing a communications audit, so we know our strengths, our weaknesses, our threats, and our opportunities, and where our materials and equipment lie to build that foundation. Development of internal policies, protocols, guidelines, and procedures, so we're more efficient and effective in our everyday work habits. Updating the city's media policies, that we are eventually gonna bring back to the city council for approval. But most importantly, creation of a communications strategic plan that will show us how to build upon our foundation. And so what is a customer-centric approach? It involves prioritizing the needs, the values, and satisfaction of our customers. It's geared towards improving the overall experience of our community. Our team here, we're basically the city's advertising team. We work for not only the internal city staff and elected officials, but also our residents, our businesses, our stakeholders, our local, state, and federal partners. So by adopting this approach, we can continue to build trust and enhance the positive impact we have on the well-being of our community. And thirdly, our strategy involves staying at the forefront of technological advancements. Future operations will revolve around all of us being able to leverage digital platforms and technologies to connect with our community. As Loriann mentioned previously, data-driven decision-making is becoming increasingly important, and this includes the use of artificial intelligence. A lot of people have heard AI floating around, and we're already using it here in the city of Santa Fe Springs. Other technological advances, such as using aerial drone foot... Other technological advances such as using aerial drone footage and state-of-the-art camera equipment will allow us to quickly tailor our marketing and communications messaging for our target audiences. So today, in conclusion, we would like to thank you all and the city council and management for your commitment and support of the creative media and communications team. Together, we're embarking on a journey of growth, a connectivity, and community empowerment that will strengthen Santa Fe Springs for years to come. And since our team is in the business of promoting the city, we have some promo giveaways, and we have some for you, and for you, and for you, and we're going to be passing them out. So thank you so very much.
Good job, CMC team.
Just to ask, by any chance, do we have any interns in your guys' team? And if we don't, can we work on that so we can actually... And what I mean by interns, I mean looking at our local high schools, whether it be Santa Fe High School, St. Paul, working with them to see, you know, getting those kids, you know, the experience that they need to, you know, when they get out of high school or they go to college. It's really important.
This team's evolving, and it's going to be an amazing team, and I'm sure the growth and the participation of bringing the youth on board is something that we definitely would love to do as part of our concept.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Next, we have the planning photo contest winners. I'd like to call upon planning intern Pablo Castillo.
Good evening, Mayor, members of city council, and community members. This evening, we are pleased to present the winners of the sixth annual National Community Planning Month Photo Contest. The photo contest was comprised of three separate categories, including city location, city event, and city public art. The contest spanned from September 1st to October 31st, 2023, and the top entry from each category will receive a monetary award of $125, a feature in all things Santa Fe Springs newsletter, a mention on the city's social media, and be showcased at the city library. I would like to invite now the top entry of each category to join us at the front when I call your name. I would like to present Veronica Moraica for the top entry in the city location category. For our next category, I would like to present it to Emmanuel Caldona, the top entry in city event category.
There it is. That's why he has that nickname. Good job, Manny.
Ready, three, two, one. Three, two, one.
Hold on, hold on. Yeah, you're dropping. Yeah.
Three, two, one. Three, two, one.
It's easier to say media than it is the whole name. Yes, the whole name, man.
And lastly, I would like to present Frederick Shacklet, the top entry in the city public art category.
Do you want to take a group one with everybody in the planning department? Straight ahead, the clock.
Ready, three, two, one. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Three, two, one.
You're part of the planning, right? Planning staff? Wayne, get over here, planning department. Planning commissioners. What else have we got out there?
Here we go. Ready, three, two, one. Three, two, one. Thank you.
Mayor Protem, we have no changes tonight.
Thank you. Public comments. Public comments are now open. The public may address the city council on any non-public hearing item on the agenda or on any other matter within the council's jurisdiction. You will have an opportunity to speak for three minutes once the deputy city clerk announces your name. Deputy city clerk, do we have any members of the public that wish to speak today?
Yes, Mayor Protem, we have one person wishing to speak, Adrian Montesinos.
Good evening, esteemed city council members. My name is Adrian Montesinos, and I am the president of the St. Paul Heister Booster Club. Tonight, I am accompanied by our principal, Mr. Robert Miller, as well as our golf tournament co-chair, Ms. Rebecca Ramirez. We're here today to briefly tell you about the St. Paul High School Booster Club, as well as invite you to our annual charity golf tournament happening on Monday, May 13th. The St. Paul High School Booster Club has always been around, but we spent the last year getting it off the ground again. Our mission is simple but broad at the same time. Our mission is to support all sports and activities of St. Paul High School. How do we do that? We support the school by fundraising, hosting events, alumni outreach, community outreach, helping to increase enrollment, finding opportunities, and helping to direct resources to the school. Over the past year, our group has accomplished a lot and has had several victories along the way in terms of completing our mission. Due to our performance, we have been entrusted to run and host this year's St. Paul High School Golf Classic, which we are extremely proud to do. I would like to formally invite all of the members of city council and the rest of Santa Fe Springs to attend our golf tournament in May. If you are a golfer, I promise the golf will be great. If you are not a golfer, we have accommodations for you. The Latina Golfers Association will be hosting a free Golf 101 lesson, which includes both the range and putting sessions, where men and women will be able to learn the basics of golf, including golf etiquette. Clubs will be provided by the Latina Golfers Association, and no experience is required. We will also be having an after-party on the patio, where we'll have food, drinks, auctions, raffles, socializing, and networking. Attending the after-party does not require attending golf during the day. We are also looking for sponsors and ask that you share our information with the businesses and interested persons of Santa Fe Springs, so that they may consider being a sponsor for our event. St. Paul High School has been a proud member of the Santa Fe Springs community since 1956. I looked that up on the website today. We are proud to be here tonight, and we look forward to continue being involved in the wonderful community of Santa Fe Springs. Thank you.
Adrian, do you have any of the flyers? Adrian, do you have the flyers to pass out?
Yes.
Deputy city clerk, do we have any one else that would like to speak?
No other speakers.
Okay, we'll now close public comments and move on to the next item. Staff communications on items of community interest. Mr. Bobbadea, do we have any staff communications?
Yes, Mayor Protem. We have one communication. Our director of community services, Maricela Valdés, will report.
Thank you, Renee. Good evening, members of the council, audience. I have two items to share with you this evening. First, our community services department is going to be offering free tax preparation help as part of our volunteer income tax program. Registration for residents opened yesterday, January the 22nd, and it'll open for non-residents on Monday, January the 29th. Appointments need to be made and will be accepted through April 1st. Participants who made $94,000 or less in 2023 may qualify, so to make an appointment, please call the Gus Filasco Neighborhood Center. And staff and volunteers have already begun training and are excited to help you with your taxes. And then the next item is the 2024 homeless count for Santa Fe Springs will be conducted tomorrow, January 24th, at the Gus Filasco Neighborhood Center from 8:00 PM to 12:00 midnight. The event is a collaboration between the Los Angeles Homeless Service Authority, Police Services, and the Community Services Departments. Volunteers will team up and drive the streets of Santa Fe Springs, looking for homeless individuals, and they'll be using cellphone apps to tally up the numbers of homeless individuals. The data collected will be combined with those of other cities across the greater Los Angeles area, and then the data will be collected, and it's going to assist with funding and resource allocation. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Maricela. And I don't mean to put you on the spot, Maricela, but I think this is exciting news for our community. We're also doing passport services at the library?
Yes, we also are doing passport services, and I believe we've also opened up for Saturday appointments. So if you go onto the city website, you can make an appointment for a passport appointment.
Thank you. It's so difficult right now to get one. It takes forever, and we can help here at the library, so if anybody's interested in a passport, we provide those services.
Thank you, Maricela. The next item is a public hearing item on approval of alcohol sales conditional use permit. I'd like to call upon Mr. Bobbadea.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Before the city council tonight is a public hearing for approval of alcohol sales conditional use permit, case number 87, and the adoption of resolution number 9894. This is a warehouse in our city that is going to be storing alcohol. This company makes the, fabricates the cardboard where the alcohol is going to be stored. They do this for various big companies. So before you is an approval. This was approved by the planning commission at a previous planning commission meeting, and it's before you for consideration.
Thank you.
Well, for any questions, Mayor Protem.
The public hearing is now open. Anyone wishing to be heard, please approach the podium and state your name. Is there anyone who'd like to speak? If not, deputy city clerk, are there any speakers? No speakers?
No speakers, excuse me.
Okay, at this time, I'll close the public hearing. Is there any discussion or motion for the approval of item number four?
I'll move.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Zamora, second by Martin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Next item, public financing authority, water utility authority successor agency, city council consent calendars. We have a total of 12 consent items, numbers five through 16. There's a motion and approval of the consent calendars.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Rodriguez, second by Zamora. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Appointments to boards, committees, and commissions. Councilmember Martin?
I actually do have someone. I have traffic open. I'd like to appoint A.J. Hayes to my traffic commission, come out from the past. So I appoint A.J. Hayes.
Congratulations.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
None at this time, thank you.
Councilmember Zamora?
None at this time.
And I have none. Council comments, or AB 1234 council conference reporting. Councilmember Martin?
No, it's just great to hear that we have the passports now, to do passports, and then the who, what, and that is, that's great. I can't wait to see how big it's going to be for the next year, and the fact that St. Paul's actually here. You know, you guys are in our city, and it's taken you guys forever to come, you know, get involved in here, right, Mr. Miller? But thank you. Thank you, exactly. And it has made a big difference. I mean, how St. Paul is now and how much it's involved, you guys have done a great job. I can't wait to see what else you guys bring to the city, so welcome aboard.
We appreciate you guys' support, even before we were here, so thank you.
I'm just glad that you're here.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
I want to say good evening to everyone, and congratulations, A.J., you're traffic commissioner. And just, I don't have my glasses on, so bear with me, but anyway, I want to say what a great job our presentations were today. Thank you, St. Paul High School, for being here, and the planning commission. Also, I'd like to tell our, they're not here right now, but our creative media, they do such a fantastic job. There you are. Yeah, they do such a fantastic job, and when they bring us to do videos, they're so patient with us. Sometimes they have to go and do it again and again, and we get a little, I don't know, I get a little embarrassed thinking, let me just do it one more time. I didn't like the way it goes, but they're very patient with us. And when I watch the videos, I just start cracking up, but it's just so funny to see yourself on there. But great job. Thank you for being here and all the work that you put out. Our media is getting better and better. I love it. Thank you to our public works. They did a great job with everything that they're doing in our community, and I want to thank our Whittier police for continuing to keep us safe, and I think that's it. Thank you, have a nice evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Zamora?
You know, just to echo what my colleagues have said, I mean, just, our staff does an amazing job. I mean, they just put their efforts in, and, you know, some of it is selfless because they go above and beyond, and so for those of you who do that, you know, daily, we just can't thank you enough, and those who don't, I mean, of course, it's just, you know, the city's moving in a different direction. I mean, the past leadership was kind of shaky for us, and I think everybody would agree up here. And, you know, so I do want to give kudos to Mr. Bobbadea, just because this creative team, you know, we had our vision that wasn't executed, and what I mean by that is us up here, and Mr. Bobbadea was able to execute a vision and bring something that we've always thought of and wanted, but it was like pulling teeth, and, you know, the fact that he made changes and put it under the jurisdiction of Maricela, I mean, kudos to them, because, I mean, you didn't have to take on that, but you did, and the fact of where we're going and the direction we're going, because it almost seemed, and this is not to knock anybody, but we had no direction. You know, we had posts, but we didn't have direction, and I think now that leadership is evolving, and it's going to make a 2024, you know, showing the transparency. We know that in our government right now, there really isn't any transparency. So the fact that we're able to do that, I mean, it just, it helps us out a lot, so I just want to thank all the staff for putting in their efforts. Of course, A.J., congratulations, and once again, I mean, may God always bless the city of Santa Fe Springs. Thank you.
Thank you. It's good to see everyone tonight, to come out, take time out of your busy schedule to come and see what's going on with your city. This is your city, and see how everything take place. I agree with the CMC, that's what I'm going to call you guys. That other one's a tongue twister, I'm sorry. But it's good to see the group together, so anybody that does follow social media, now you know where it comes from. We've got a great team, we've got some young individuals, very creative, and I agree, I love seeing you guys on the other side of the screen being taped versus us being taped. Congratulations, A.J., with your appointment. St. Paul, you never left, right? You've always been there, just a little quiet sometimes, but you're back. I kind of noticed that, yes. And to our staff, you know, 2024 is going to be a great year. It's already started off, it's hard to believe we're already through January, but, you know, we're just getting started. We've got a lot of stuff going on this year and looking forward to it, so thank you. So thank you. Thank you again for everyone being here tonight. And with that being said, I will adjourn tonight's meeting.